Okay, President Seeks, I think we'll try to figure out what's wrong here in a minute. We're gonna go ahead and record right from the Zoom link and then try to upload that or something to the YouTube. For some reason, the YouTube live stream recording, the recording part's not working.
Okay, sounds like a good plan. Well, with that, I will officially call the meeting to order. Mrs. Peterson, do we have any requests for public participation?
Mr. President, there have been no requests.
Thank you. Then we will move on. I'm looking for a motion with respect to the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
This is Mrs. Orton.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Any discussion? See, no, no, just mention, I do wanna give a thanks to the Marathon Petroleum Corporation and the third grade instructor Kelly Smith for that grant, STEM grant, that's to Lincoln, that was great to see in there, and also a little bit of a shout out to the high school tech education instructor Susan Hader for the award that she got, that teacher excellence award for 2021, so that was great to see. We will do a voice vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Alright, that motion carries. Next, I'm looking for a motion for regular meeting agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Wilkie.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Orton. Any discussion with respect to the agenda? Alright, seeing none, we'll do a voice vote again. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Alright, we will now then turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Hawker, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items that I'd like to update the board on at this time. And the first is, just as a reminder, the Halliburton property that we've been discussing for, since summertime, that purchase of that property has now taken place, so you are officially owners of the Halliburton campus. We'll now have to maybe rename that to Campus North or something, come up with some kind of a good name there. But congratulations on wrapping that property up, and now we'll look forward to some good planning discussions in the future as to how best to utilize that property. And the second item, just again, is a kind of a end of calendar year, beginning of a new year. Usually sometime in January or February, we bring to the board a calendar for the next school year. We are planning a calendar committee meeting this week, later this week on Thursday, and our hope is, we'll get some feedback on some calendar information and then try to share that out with everybody to get some feedback. And if all goes well, we'll be able to bring that to you at your January 11th school board meeting. Those are the two items that I wanted to share out with the board tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, on our agenda, in our business topics, we've got some principal reports. We're lucky to have with us both the principals from Prairie Rose and Heart River, so if it's alright, we'll start with Principal Wyler from Prairie Rose. Good to see your face.
Alright, well, thank you, President Seeks and the rest of the board for this opportunity to kind of give you a little sneak peek into some things that have been happening at Prairie Rose. So I am going to share my screen, 'cause I have a little presentation. Alright, hopefully you're seeing my screen. Okay, so Prairie Rose, we are a lighthouse school, or getting to that point with leader in me, so we're gonna first focus on some of the things that our kids have done. And our student lighthouse team, we have evolved in what this team is and the expectations of our students and their leadership skills that they continue to grow in as we move forward. So our student lighthouse team is a part of our leader in me initiative. Members are chosen because they have exceptional leadership skills and are committed to serving our school. Throughout the school year, members of the student lighthouse team will work on school improvement projects, community service projects, and planned leadership events and opportunities. Students will be involved in coming up with the ideas to help create an atmosphere of kindness and learning at Prairie Rose Elementary. So it started out with our campaign and voting for the 2021 Student Lighthouse Officers. We had our whole voting session up in our entryway a few weeks ago. Students filled out an application process, then they received teacher approval, and finally, they were interviewed by one of our lighthouse advisors. So it's a pretty intense process to get yourself through this and to be nominated. And then after that process, students created their campaign posters that they hung up around our building. And then one of the biggest pieces that they had to do is they had to come up with their campaign speeches. So hopefully my sound and everything's correct for you to hear some snippets of a few of our kids and little snippets from their campaign speeches.
If I'm elected, I plan to set goals to crush them. I can't wait to come up with new ideas to help improve our school. I also would like to help out in our community. There are many things that we can do to give back to the community. I promise to help out in any way that I can. I want everyone to get what help they need and to have fun at school. The best part of my day is coming to school, see my friends and teachers. I look forward to helping make Prairie Rose a better place. I can't wait to meet all of you. So when it is time to vote, please vote for me. Thank you for watching my video, Mackenzie Hosted.
A little about me is that my favorite animal is a wolf. My favorite color is blue. I have two favorite subjects, math and reading. My favorite sports are baseball, wrestling, and soccer. In wrestling, two years ago, I placed fourth at state. I want to be on the student lighthouse team for fourth grade. If I get elected, I will try to put more trees around the school. Also, I'll try to divide the school soccer balls more evenly throughout our school. If you fifth graders choose to vote for me, and I am on the lighthouse team, I have two main ideas I would like to share. First, I would like to leave the Prairie Rose Elementary in hosting a student bake-off to raise money for our cause we all agree on. This will help us build creative life skills by new things, I mean, try new things and connect our community. The other idea I have for helping Prairie Rose Elementary is to develop a school garden to grow flowers, vegetables, and food to share with others. This will help us work together. This will also help us build real-life science skills and contribute to our environs while growing our minds, bodies, and relationships with each other. Most importantly, I would like to have your votes. I can hear your ideas as well. Lastly, I feel it's important for you to know that your vote will help me grow to be more confident in the leadership role. You can help me accomplish my personal goal. Vote for me, Katie Schlecht.
That was only a short...
If I'm elected, I plan to set goals to crush them.
That was only a tiny snippet of the campaign videos, but they did those on their own. They used our Seesaw platform, that's how they posted their videos for the other kids to watch and vote from. So you know, when the community or people out there say our kids are failing, I would say they're showing us that they're not. They are way beyond what we think kids can typically do. So it's been amazing to watch what our kids have done in this time of uncertainty, but I'm amazed at what our students do. So then, students in grades three through five participated in an official student lighthouse team election. This was kind of the setup that was in our entryway as they came and they privately voted and dropped their election form into the ballot box. And then we had announced our winners on the announcements. And then another piece that the previous lighthouse team worked on was our Panther snack attack drive. So they came up with the idea that we have lots of students that come to our building and do not have a snack every day. And so they thought, well, how can we help our students? They really want to give back and do what's best for everyone in our building and help each other. So they put together and promoted a snack drive that they sent out and posted within Seesaw to our families, made the flyers. And this kind of just shows you when we had our snack drive and the amount of snacks donated. And then fourth grade definitely took the lead with 428 snacks donated. So they were awarded an ice cream party for having the most amount of snacks brought in. So there we are, delivering the ice cream and them enjoying that little bit. The last piece that I kind of wanna focus on is our K5 Online Learning Academy. I've had the privilege to be involved pretty intensely with that group of educators that are doing our K5 Online Academy. And it's been amazing to watch their innovation as the educators, as well as the paraprofessionals that we were able to secure for them, at least one to share amongst the grade levels and support those pieces. But just to see their drive and their forward thinking, and even though we fail and there's definitely challenges in all of this, it helps us grow. So I want to showcase a little bit of what we're doing there. So we have created our K5 Online Learning Academy Information Hub. So this was created to help, since we have families from all six of our elementary buildings in that online academy. We wanted one spot where those families could go to get up-to-date things happening in the virtual land, but still stay connected to their brick-and-mortar buildings, as we don't want them to lose that connection and hear those things. We kind of have our announcement page with upcoming events that are happening. We already have our NWA testing signup genius ready to go, because that happens as soon as we come back. And then we have all of our staff pictures, so they can put a face to who their teacher might be when they're transitioning in and out from our hybrid model to the full-time online. And all of these are active links and buttons that take them into those specific grade levels where they can get more information. We also have a secretary, which has been super fabulous for the online academy, that works and helps do some of the phone calls and different things to connect with those parents, and then just all of our resources. It's really an informational hub for our online families to connect with all of us in a timely manner and get their answers or their questions answered from us. We just wanted to give a shout out to our online staff as well, that they are doing fabulous and just continuing to move forward and again, be those outside-the-box thinkers for us. And really, that's all I have to showcase, but just wanted to thank definitely our Prairie Rose families and all of our staff. You know, there's, again, like I said, we are not without challenges, that's for sure. But I think that collectively, together as a staff and as our students, that were depicted in that little showcase of their campaign videos and our families and just the community that surrounds Prairie Rose, I think that we try to communicate well together and collectively move forward. Again, we're always feeling forward, but that's how we continue to progress, and we're doing it as a collective unit. So thank you, and if there's any questions, I guess open it up to questions.
I just wanted to add that those videos were nicely done. I think it's a great example of how our students are utilizing technology, public speaking skills, and informed decisions when they vote. I think they're doing a great job, so that was nicely done. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, and there was quite a few, as we have lots of candidates for our student lighthouse team. So I wish I could have showed you all of them, but they did a nice job on their own.
Thank you, Principal Wyler. Any other questions or comments? Would you say, I think I was kind of searching for what my new resolution was for 2021, and it might just be to set some goals and crush them. So that was great. I appreciate, those are really great to see. Thank you again for everything. We appreciate all your hard work and the great things that are happening, and it was, especially online school as well. That's great to see that website, looks good. Thank you so much. Well, now turn things over to our newest principal, Principal Muffley, so it's great to have you with us tonight.
Well, thank you, and good evening to everybody. I wanted to begin by letting you know what an honor it's been serving as a principal of Heart River since July. I've been so impressed by the dedicated and caring staff of Heart River, and I've been impressed by all the great things that Dickinson Public Schools have going on. I consider myself very fortunate to join such an awesome school district that's truly student-centered. Today, I wanted to take a few minutes and share with you something new to Heart River this year called the Positivity Project. As a staff, we discussed early in the fall the importance of creating a strong social-emotional learning program for our school community. There's a great deal of research out there showing the importance of implementing a strong social-emotional learning program. But the bottom line, when you look at the research, is it indicates when social and emotional learning skills are intentionally taught, practiced, and reinforced in school, students have better behavioral, social, and academic outcomes. So as a result of our conversation in the fall, the staff agreed 100% to adopt and implement the Positivity Project in Heart River. So I wanted to take a few minutes and show a brief video from the co-founder, Mike Irwin, explaining more about the Positivity Project, and then take a few minutes after just to walk you through a lesson that a third-grade classroom would see. So I'm gonna share my screen.
Greetings, teachers. My name is Mike Irwin. I'm the co-founder and the president of the Positivity Project. We're a nonprofit organization with the mission to empower your students to build strong relationships by recognizing, appreciating, and exemplifying the character strengths in us all. Now, we are not a program. We do not have a curriculum. We're a nonprofit. We partner with schools, and we provide you with the training, the resources, the knowledge, and the confidence to be able to teach positive psychology's 24-character strengths to your students, to teach your students about the importance of building good relationships and understanding the idea that other people matter. We really put the power of this strategy into your hands. You bring it to life in a way that works for you. You make the Positivity Project your own in your classrooms and within your school. And when you do that this school year, you're gonna have a tremendous impact on your students and hopefully also on your own lives. I hope you have a great school year. Thank you so much for being a part of the Positivity Project and leading the Other People Matter movement. I'd like to take a minute now and just share a little bit more detail about the Positivity Project's strategy. As I talked about, our mission is to empower America's youth to build strong relationships. But how do we get there? It really starts with the consistent exposure to the 24-character strength language and concepts. You need to have the language and know the words, but you also need to know what they mean. Why? Two things happen when you are consistently exposed to this. Number one, your knowledge about yourself, your confidence in who you are goes up. You have the ability and the words and the knowledge to be able to recognize the good in yourself. At the same time, those words and that knowledge helps you to recognize and to see the good in other people. It's very easy for us to look for the flaws and the shortcomings in other people. But we know that when exposed to these positive words, words like integrity and fairness and forgiveness and humor and humility, that we have the ability to better understand other people, especially people that are different from us. Now, what you have is the formula for stronger relationships. When I know myself better, when I know you better, we're just gonna have a better relationship when that relationship is based upon our character strengths and not who's the most attractive or the most popular or the fastest or the smartest kid in school. Now, this is all important, because not only do these stronger relationships have an impact on people's lives and on their well-being, but it also shapes the culture and the sense of community in your school and in your life. So these better relationships, little bit by little bit, these micro-interactions that just get a little bit better, it actually helps to build a more positive culture in your building and in your classrooms, where students are having more respect for each other, and they're just building better relationships with each other, but also with their teachers. The Positivity Project's mission is grounded in the research of positive psychology, which states that there are four pillars that we need to move through to live a satisfactory and fulfilled life. The first pillar is character strengths. How well do we know ourselves and recognize the good that we have within us? The second pillar, positive relationships. We know that relationships are the number-one predictor of life satisfaction. In fact, this is why our entire mission is grounded in the idea of empowering America's youth to build strong relationships. So that second pillar of building positive relationships is so important. We know that if our students can build relationships based upon character, instead of who's the most attractive or who's the fastest or who's the smartest, that they are going to have the framework for building strong, positive relationships. Now, relationships are so important, because it sets the conditions for the third pillar, which is positive experiences and emotions. It is absolutely possible to have these positive experiences in life on our own, reading a book on our own or going for a walk on our own. However, we know that a majority of life's positive experiences occur in the presence of and with other people, with family, with friends, with teammates, with classmates, and that's why those positive experiences are so important in life. The last pillar, the fourth one, is positive institutions. These are organizations that we belong to, that help to facilitate our development of our character. They set the conditions for us to build good relationships and have as many of these positive experiences and emotions in our life that we can possibly have to live a satisfactory life. Positive psychology defines character as the family of thoughts, feelings, and behaviors that are recognized across all cultures for the value that they cultivate in individuals and in society. So in other words, character is not just what you do. Character is what you think, what you feel, and what you do. It's the combination of all three of those. Sometimes we lead with our thoughts, sometimes we lead with our actions. But regardless, character and developing good character means shaping a person's thoughts, their feelings, and their behaviors. One of the reasons the Positivity Project exists is to address a couple of concerning trends that we've noticed over the past 30 years from the research, and that is the rise of narcissism and the decrease in empathy. Since they've been tracking this data back in the 1980s, we've seen over a 30% rise in narcissism, which is this focus on oneself. And at the same time, a 40% decrease in empathy, which is the ability to put yourself in somebody else's shoes. In many ways, these are flip sides of the same coin. By teaching students about the character strengths in themselves and in others, and helping them to build an Other People Matter mindset, we know we can counter this, so that we can reverse these trends, where students are more empathetic and they're less narcissistic and focusing on themselves less, because they're focusing on other people more. While partnering with the Positivity Project is an important thing to do, it's also a smart thing to do. Researchers from MIT and Oxford over the past decade have been studying what skills will be in demand for the economy of the future. And we know that one of those skills is working together on a team, group dynamics. The more effectively that your students, as they become people in the workforce, know and interact with people from all over the world and the economy, the more effective they will be at their job and building relationships with people and working together on a team, which will then also give them the capacity to frame and to solve very complex and open-ended problems together. And the only way you're gonna be able to do that is if you've got those good group dynamics. How you build those group dynamics is by teaching your students to be able to see the character strengths in themselves, in each other, and to focus on the importance of relationships in their lives, both personally and professionally.
So from 8:10 until 8:30 every morning here at Heart River, in every classroom from kindergarten to fifth grade, our students are learning about one of the 24-character traits. The character trait's the same during the week in all the classrooms, but each grade level has different slide decks that are grade level-specific. So I wanted to just take one more moment and show you an example of one of the slide decks that I had a chance to sit in the other day in third grade. And so the slide decks look very similar. This one was how do words and actions affect others. The slide decks give the reminder of the Other People Matter mindset. There's generally quotes every day in the slide decks. Kind words can be short and easy to speak, but their echoes are truly endless. And I just wanna, this was a pretty powerful video that had a great discussion with our third graders the other day. It's about two minutes, but I'd like to show you this and just conclude with a couple more thoughts.
When we're laying on our deathbed, you're not gonna worry about how much money you had, how much power you had, how much prestige. You're gonna see that that was all game, that that was all an illusion. The only thing that's gonna matter is the impact you had on other people's lives.
We are all on a separate journey. But the beautiful thing about our life here on this earth is at my funeral, they ain't gonna talk about my success. They're gonna talk about who Nick was and how Nick lived and how Nick loved and encouraged.
Success is incredibly important, but even more important than success, it's having an impact. It's knowing you haven't walked the planet in vain. It's knowing that because you've been here, you've blessed lives. You've developed people, and you have made the world a better place.
The effect you have on others is the most valuable currency there is. Everything you gain in life will rot and fall apart, and all that will be left of you is what was in your heart.
Life is a mirror, and life gives us not what we want, life gives us who we are. When you were born, you cried while the world rejoiced. Live your life in such a way that when you die, the world cries while you rejoice.
So after the video, in this particular lesson, and each lesson has these questions for the class that a rich dialogue takes place. It's pretty amazing to, in this particular lesson, the lesson went beyond our 20-minute time, because the kids were so engaged in it and the impact on it. And then you can see it moves into day two, but these were the questions for the day. And this was happening across the building, not the same video, not the same questions necessarily, but the same thought process or these character traits are happening, K through five. So I wanted to just conclude to share two stories of the impact. One that I saw in my previous school and one that I've seen here at Heart River so far with the Positivity Project. I had in my previous school, a fifth grader walk up to me and said, "Can I schedule an appointment with you, Mr. Muffley?", which I loved. I said, "Of course you can, Maya." And so we scheduled an appointment, and she says, when she sat down across from my desk, she said, "I just wanna, I wanna do something for a friend. You've taught us other people matter, and I have a friend who's in dance with me, and her father has esophagus cancer, and they're not able to dance, he's unable to work, and so they can't afford it right now. So I'd like to do a can drive in Michigan. Cans are $10, they're returnables. And she said, "I'd like to do that on the parking lot. My mom will help. I'll put on a yellow vest. I'll be out there. I'll collect the cans." But I'd like to collect money for my friend so that she continue with dance, and she raised $1,000. But I loved that she incorporated this thought process of Other People Matter. And then my last example here at Heart River that I've seen in the short time that we've adopted this. There was a couple of second graders that the teacher was intervening. There was a little bit of an argument that had happened on the playground, and that happens sometimes, as we know, kids are learning. And so a little girl was frustrated with her friend, and you could tell visibly upset. And I was listening to the teacher talk to them, and she said, "Well, the character trait we're learning this week is forgiveness." She says, "Do you think that you'd be willing to sit down with your friend and talk about it and talk about forgiveness?" And it was just, you know, the kid made the connection, the student made the connection right off the bat, and she said, "Yeah, I'll do that." And I just listened. I didn't have to intervene. I just got to hover and listen to this conversation surrounded around this character trait of forgiveness. So there's really powerful things happening. So we're excited here at Heart River. The staff is seeming to really enjoy it. I've heard nothing but good feedback, and I've had the opportunity to, in my previous school, utilize the Positivity Project. And so I'm excited about what I think the impact is here and what the impact will continue to be as we incorporate the Positivity Project. So with that, thank you again. I have loved my time in Dickinson, and I appreciate all the support. And I look forward to meeting you all in person at some point. If there's any questions for me, I'm certainly happy to answer. If there's any questions for me, I'm certainly happy to answer.
Thank you, Principal Muffley. Does anyone have any uh questions or comments, Mr. Muffley? You know, just thank you so much for uh sharing the Positivity Project with us. And um we're excited to have you in our district. I've only heard wonderful things about your work there. And so um thank you so much. We really appreciate it. We will now move next into our business topics. Um and we go from positivity to destruction. We're looking for a motion about destroying old records that we need to get rid of. So is anyone ready to make that motion?
Mr. President.
It's Orton.
I move to authorize the business manager to destroy the records as presented by shredding and or depositing them in the Dickinson City landfill.
Thank you, Mr. Orton. Looking for a second?
I can second that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rotikowski. Um, do we have any discussion about that? It's a regular practice that we do. We just have to approve it each year. So any discussion? Looking at your opinions that don't seem, we will do a voice vote then. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes uh destroy them in the landfill. So got some work to do. This is Hunter. Uh, next, um, we've got uh policies to deal with. I'm looking for a motion. It's the first reading of policy.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rotikowski?
Uh, I move to approve the first reading and final adoption of the revised board regulation AAC dash BR two, Title Nine Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rotikowski. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Orton. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. This time we'll start with Mr. Wookiee.
Aye.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mrs. Orton.
Aye.
Mr. Rotikowski.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so that passes. Um, now we're looking for another first reading for um two policies we've got.
Mr. President.
Mr. Wookiee.
I move to approve the first reading of the revision to policy HBA Federal Fiscal Compliance and KBA Relations with News Media as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wookiee. We have a second.
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. Any discussion? I just have one question, maybe Dr. Hocker, you can mention it. Under that, the privacy, the new language that it states, it just uses the sentence that says, "When the news media are invited into a school facility by a district staff member, every effort will be made to protect the student's directory information." I just didn't know what was meant by directory information, if that's the same thing as personal information or if that was something different in a school time. I don't want to put you in the spotlight, but I would.
No, that's okay. Um, the directory information is information that uh can can be passed out to those upon request. And so uh but we're just wanting to be sensitive with that information. Um, obviously, elementary students, other students, um, we need to be very careful on what we can identify as as legit released information versus that information that's that's not.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Or we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, this time we will start with Mrs. Orton.
Aye.
Mr. Rotikowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Wookiee.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so those pass. Uh, some second readings, looking for a motion for those policies.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Orton.
I move to approve the first reading of the revisions to policies ACAA Emergency Closings, BDA Procedure for Adopting Board Policy, DDAA Family and Medical Leave Act, FFI Student Use of Personal Technology, FGCA Searches of Lockers, FGCB Searches of Students and Students' Personal Possessions and KAAA Visitors in the Schools as Presented.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, we will do a roll call vote. Uh, this time we will start with Mr. Rotikowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Wookiee.
Aye.
Mrs. Orton.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so those motions pass. Um, let's see. That is all that we have for our business topics. And so um at this point, we will adjourn.
Hey, I got, can I go off script, Mr. President?
Sure.
Is that allowed?
I think so.
Okay, I I got some questions I just want to bring up. I I know we're going to beat this with a dead horse, but okay, on November twentieth, we had our conversation about going back face to face, right? And at that time, those numbers were wild, right? There was the fourteen day, I went looked today, but the fourteen day rolling average was fifteen point one seven percent. There was three hundred and twenty three hospitalized and there was thirty some staff out, right? And those numbers were were way too high. And one of the things that Sherry said is she wants the positivity rate to be below ten percent, right? So today, the fourteen day rolling average was seven point eight percent. Hospitalizations were two seventy seven and then staff out is about eleven, right? So I think we all want to target that face to face. So if we wait till the January eleventh board meeting, then that puts us probably February or something like that. Is there a possibility that we can schedule a special board meeting to revisit this to start earlier? Or is that not a possibility over the break?
Mr. President, may I?
Yes, please, Dr. Hocker.
Yeah, uh, Jason, I guess I would like, I just need a little more clarification. Um, we're not, it wouldn't take near that long to return if the board, if the board supported a return on the eleventh. Um, we could be bringing kids back um long, you know, probably very likely the very next week. Um, and so certainly not into February.
Sure. So if we voted out on the eleventh, if our numbers continue the same, then they would be low for a month, say, um, which which would be probably within reason and then we could do it on the nineteenth. So if we wanted to target face to face on the fourth, could we have a special board meeting to do that or that's too soon?
So, Mr. President, if I may, um, yeah, the the conversations from uh our local health officials have to do with the uh the the need for wanting to evaluate both holidays. Um, as you very well know, um, we did not fortunately experience that increase over Thanksgiving, which we are super happy about. It looks like everybody did what they're supposed to do. The concern is, we're we're certainly hoping our our community continues with the the progress and the commitment to to uh to keep to keep everything as safe as they can. The uh the holiday on on New Year's Eve is is much different than the holiday on Thanksgiving. And so um there there there, the recommendation is that we we allow that Christmas um gathering as well as the New Year's gathering to to uh run its course. And so that within fourteen days after that event, to notice a spike or not, we feel like the eleventh is is giving us eleven days. It's very close. Um, and that way, we're hoping that uh on that night, we could could make that decision if we're not seeing any increased numbers there. That's and that's the recommendations from the Department of Health.
Okay, and then it'd be, and then we possibly, possibly, obviously, nobody knows what's going on with the rate, the the numbers and whatnot. We would possibly be ready to go on the nineteenth.
Yeah, we exactly.
All right, that's all I had.
Thanks for clarifying. It was good to see you all and we will um have a great holidays and we'll see you in January.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
See you guys.